Gyms opened up on February eighth in terms of gyms are open, but it's only for retail and one-on-one. And then, of course, under some more pressure because there's a collective of gyms province-wide. They, on Friday, I believe, opened up a little bit more where now kids classes up to ten in a class are now available. So continued pressure is looking like it's working. Uh, we were in a town hall call last week and it was a little frustrating in terms of, I won't speak much longer, um, but uh, we talked about our numbers. That's right on the Alberta government website about uh dance and martial arts kickboxing, any of the of the gyms, the fitness industry, um, how few cases that we've had and the the province, um, Dr. Hinshaw said, well, we do have those numbers on our website. However, um, because our contact tracing has some flaws, we don't really stand by those numbers. They're justifying us staying closed that way. In the same breath, they will say, hey, contact tracing has showed us that schools are safe and are safe to open because the children aren't spreading it. So it works or it doesn't. That's just my piece. Um, another thing that they had open before February eighth, we could go to residents to do one-on-one training. The residents could have several cohorts. They could have several family members there of all ages and all abilities. Um, soft surfaces, household cleaners, um, that's kind of what could happen there where ourselves in the industry, and again, I'll speak for everybody, we we have industrial cleaners, uh, we have hard surfaces, we have open rooms. Um, so we have the luxury of being much more safer than what the province is kind of allowed. Um, I guess the only last piece is not only um our physical and mental and emotional health are our bread and butter. And uh, we speak of, um, that is now a piece this this month, right? One of the things is our mental health, um, but also our impact overall. So our posters, our branding, anything, our, you know, we keep the print shops busy. We have industrial, our cleaners are from local businesses, if not in town, then at least within the province. Um, so we impact a lot of other places. We try and support as many other businesses, you know, we'll have kids parties and get pizza brought in. So it's not just our industry, um, us being closed affects um a lot of businesses and the economy within the town. So that's that's my spiel without being written down, if I didn't ramble too much. I guess I will ask if there's anything that, you know, people that came um want to add, otherwise I guess we open up for questions.
Yep, if there's anyone else from the delegation that would like to speak, I will open it up for that. Um, if not, I will ask council if they have any questions. So councillor Dodds.
Well, thank you very much for coming today. I know that this is very important. And like you said, this is the month, you know, of mental health and things like that. And I think that's one thing that has definitely got overlooked through all of this. I mean, through not only like a recession, but now a pandemic. And I think that, you know, it it's more prominent than ever that our mental health is is suffering and and how do we get, you know, better mental health is through physical health, right? So I definitely agree with you on this and I definitely am supportive of doing something and trying to be loud about this and making sure that we are standing up for what is important because I think it's very important right now more than ever. So thank you for coming.
All right, councillor McGee.
Good morning, Brad. Uh, Tom here. Um, just thinking about the the sense that you're what you're driving at right now is to is to get people engaged, get conversations going, get letters of support to the province so that they in fact start to open that 3D what we're what we're trying to do and more voices seem to to help that. Is that is that?
Uh, more voices, um, we had we had a lot of voices and it seems to be effective, but now we're looking for these stronger voices. So representation, um, your letters that you choose to to write it would represent the community as opposed to the citizens. Right? So it's got a little bit more power to it. It's got a little bit more earth, um, backing of community versus what could be shown as just a niche market, which is just the right people to share their very big vision.
Yeah, councillor Kamana.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Brad, you know, well put, you know, very well written this piece here. And uh, you know, I'm sure we'll have a discussion, but uh, I'm uh in full support of what's what's written here.
Councillor Ballas.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and uh, I certainly do agree with your position. Uh, as you probably know, we have a very strong advocate on council uh for supporting your position. But uh, it 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 is very important to the children and not only children, but the adults as well. And uh, I I think it's time that we took a stance um and certainly start supporting some positions.
Um, on the government's release, you know, the number of hospitalizations, what would the number of hospitalizations have to be for gyms to be fully open? Kind of on the the plan that they have right now, would it be like under a hundred?
We're step three, which is three hundred. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think it's, I think we're
so many numbers. But yeah, step step three, so there's currently minimum twenty-one days between steps right now in step one. And should the cases reach opening for step two, uh, we're looking at uh March, April for step two, and then step three would be, you know, of course, April, May. Um, so quite significant. And uh, not only that step, there was um sport, um, like competitive sport like soccer, hockey, baseball, any of those sports were also in step three. So it also comes at a time where registration is passed and we could look at another year without any physical outlets.
Councillor Dodds.
So um, I just talked to my sister yesterday and she said that her son just got notified that basketball was going to be starting up. How is that happening, Ben?
They're allowed so what they have opened up is training, so not games, but training for up to ten um for nineteen-year-olds and younger. So that is uh kind of where where that happened. It came in at ill time. Um, hockey had just announced that they were closing their season and then two or four hours later, the announcement came from the public saying you can now do training for up to a group of ten. Um, but yes.
Yeah, that was certainly unfortunate timing for their announcement. You would think they could have rolled that out a little more strategically, but councillor Wheeler.
Yeah, no, I just I would echo everyone's comments. Thank you all for coming. You're all taking time out of your days to be here and we appreciate that as well. So it goes a long way. We're we're happy to put our support behind a great group. I know each of you personally and being in the industry and the difference that you make in in people's and kids' lives is really important. So thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions, um, yeah, thank you very much for taking the time. And um, I'm sure this afternoon we'll have an opportunity to discuss the possibility of sending a letter. And we'll let you know how that moves forward.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, so that is the end of our delegations. We move on to our decision items. Um, we have eight point one, which is Town of Drayton Valley Public Works Equipment Debencher Bylaw twenty twenty-one dash one dash F, presented for second and third reading. We have Ms. Elvira Thompson, General Manager of Finance, if you would like to take stage.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So right now, um, so the RFD is for to pass the second and third heat readings for this uh, debenture by law twenty twenty-one oh one F. And the total amount that we are planning to borrow is five hundred ninety-one thousand and two hundred dollars, which will be made up of uh parks equipment, a tandem truck, two total workmen's, a Ford F-550 dump body and an asphalt hot box. The current interest rate is point seven eight nine two percent for a five-year debenture. So um, yeah, administration asks for the second and third readings to be passed today. Excuse me.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for administration? Councillor Dodds.
Just a question, um, why are we debenturing this when we have seven over seven hundred thousand in the capital budget allocated there? What was the intention behind this?
We budgeted for this with the intention of borrowing right from the get-go. The reason is that we have lots of room in our um our borrowing limits and we are we don't have as much cash on hand as we did before this year because we um pulled quite a bit from reserves for getting DB back to work. So this was just a a way to manage our cash flows.
Councillor Ballas, did you have a question?
Just what is our annual payment? You said over five years?
Yes.
And our annual payment would be?
I'll guess a hundred and or for the annual payment, so it will probably be, I'm going to guess about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars a month. So, are we close to that?
This is all in the budget.
Okay, you have councillor Peebles and councillor Kamana.
Thank you, worship. Um, maybe we could have our uh her Owen, I don't know your last name, so I'm just gonna say Owen. We can maybe have Owen come up and speak to this. Um, because right now we're just talking about the interest rates on these pieces of equipment. But what I think is exciting is what these could do to our level of service in our community. So can you talk a little bit about what these would do for us as a whole, for us in our community as we try to do things better?
Okay, thank you councillor. Um, so essentially the parks equipment would be two more vent trucks, which would uh replace some of our aging John Deere parks maintenance fleet. Um, it'll be also a couple of attachments uh for a leaf collector for our parks. So instead of having five seasonal seasonal, we can have one operator spend half a day picking up leaves in a park. So it's a lot more faster, a lot more efficient. Um, also there'll be a boom mower. So such essentially it's a a fifteen-foot sickle mower that we can actually shave hedges. We can beat back the crowding bush going into our our trails throughout the parks and that. Um, so that's where I feel on the park side, there'll be definitely an increase to service level. Uh, the tandem and the Ford F-550, essentially that's replacing existing aging uh machines, equipment that is uh costing quite a bit to maintain to this point. Uh, the actual hot box will be uh something I'm very excited for, for us to uh be doing potholes uh faster, more efficiently and more professionally done. Um, and then uh, listen here. That's the the F-550. Yeah. So um, with the tandem, just as kind of a sideline for snow removal, I have an idea that I would like to uh exercise once we get this tandem is we drive outside right now throughout town and there's a little bit on the residential streets of compacted snow, compacted ice. Not enough to call upon a full snow removal event because obviously that costs a fair amount of money. But also too, I can reorganize our fleet so that we can actually pick away at doing residential snow clearing ourselves during these lulls, through these times where it's a bit snowier or a bit slower, but there's not enough snow to call on all the contractor fleets and get everything rolling. So my my hope, my dream is that once we get this tandem with our two tandems and only have going back to one sander that we're able to do five, six, seven, eight, nine residential streets a day where we can pick it up with our grader, our snow blower, a dump truck. So that I feel that would be an incredible service level increase. Um, so that the public is feeling that their tax dollars are at work and also hopefully council appreciates that we're out there consistently seeing those amber lights glowing and we're doing the very best we can.
Well, great speech. Councillor Kamana.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Link. Exactly, Mr. Link, you know, that that sounds excellent. Um, one comment and one question for you. Uh, comment is that that's that's great interest rates, eh?
Yeah, total interest will be eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Yeah, that's for five years. That's excellent. But my my question, uh, Mr. Link is that um yes, we are purchasing this for five years, but this equipment should be better for longer periods, I believe in.
Absolutely, yes. Um, so when it comes to the tandem and well, the tandem will be about a twelve-year lifecycle. Uh, the hot box trailer would almost be infinite. I mean, it's a trailer with very simple processes to it. Um, the Ford F-550, we're looking probably about seven years. So most of this stuff will, its life cycle will be expanded beyond its debenture, like we'll call on making payments on it for. Um, and then with the parks equipment too, it was a very dire need to replace some of the stuff because its life cycle as per the manufacturer is essentially five years, five thousand dollars, it's it's done. And we're pushing a lot of our parks equipment that right now it's eight seventy thousand. So it's costing a lot of money to maintain this stuff. And it's it's a fair, sorry, if I may add this to, it's a fair checkup or a fair chunk upfront. Um, but with this amount that I'm asking for, I call it a surge, it it allows me to develop a ten-year equipment or fleet or fleet replacement program so that I'm only coming to council every year asking for approximately two hundred thousand dollars instead of five hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand, you know, it'll make it a lot more easier for me to plan and budget for and also for hopefully council to group.
Yeah, perfect. Councillor Dodds.
Uh, you had mentioned that we have one sander. How old is our sander? Is it typical to have just one sander? And then how long does it take to sand the whole community?
So we have two trucks. We have our tandem truck, older tandem truck, single axle truck. Um, it's a seven-yard sander and a ten-yard sander respectively. Um, we can in a full day, we can do the entire town. When we would only need two sanders to say if we have freezing rain or if we're getting like heavy consistent snow. But the the benefit of this is even if we use one of the two new or the either the new tandem or existing tandem, we can at any time put that second tandem on or second sander on, pardon me, within forty-five minutes, we can have two sanders going. So it's a very versatile. We can interchange it very quickly, just depending on the needs. So say if we're Monday to Thursday, we're doing residential snow cleanup ourselves, it calls for snow on Thursday. It it takes nothing to take the tailgate off and drop the sander in the larger truck and then we're up into sanders almost instantly.
Councillor Peebles.
I tell you what, the MyPillow and Shamwell guy has nothing on you, my friend. So with that, uh, I'd make the motion that council gives second reading to propose uh borrowing by law twenty twenty-one zero one F as presented.
All right, any comments, questions or debate on that?
Councillor McGee, um, just a quick question, uh, how how do we work with the county of Brazu? Do they have big sanders? And do we, can we call on them or do we call on them?
Um, thank you councillor McGee. Um, we do have an agreement with them. It's more standing to do the our portion of the ring road when they do their portion of the ring road. However, the current agreement that has been in place for two years, there was a rate settled on by my predecessor with the town for a fee of eight hundred and twenty-three dollars an hour for the county to do the trail and also our small little stretch of the uh ring road. So I feel that if we were to engage them, um, my cost for snow removal would be astronomical, to say the very least. Um, and as for size, majority of their fleet is about the same size as ours, a ten or twelve yard sander on a tandem truck. We, they do have a couple triaxles that hold an insurmountable amount of sand and liquid calcium because they use that. Um, but they only have about three trucks of that size.
All right, anything else? So the motion is that council give second reading to propose borrowing by law twenty twenty-one dash one dash F as presented. All in favor? That is carried. Is there a councillor that I'd like to make a motion for third reading? Councillor Wheeler.
Thank you. I move that council give third reading to propose borrowing by law twenty twenty-one oh one F as presented.
All right, any comments, questions or debate on that? Seeing none, the motion is that council give third reading to propose borrowing by law twenty twenty-one dash one dash F as presented. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Move on to eight point two, Business License Amending Bylaw twenty twenty-one dash oh one dash D, presented for first, second and third reading. Mr. Ellis.
Good morning, Mayor Dirksen and members of council. Uh, so um, the purpose of this bylaw is um as a result of our land use by law that we passed uh last month. Um, the um home occupation regulations were incorporated into the land use by law. So this uh amending by law to the uh business license by law would um take those home occupation um regulations out. So we don't have um the same issue addressed in to potentially conflicting bylaws. Uh, the other um thing is um that this bylaw does is um takes out the uh uh the applications that were provided, that are provided as uh schedules to that bylaw, um, because we have updated our um applications uh to be more user-friendly and also with our new town logo. Um, so those applications are no longer relevant. Uh, so we're taking those out and then just renumbering the sections. So uh, that's what this bylaw does. Um, we are um planning on um coming forward with a whole new business license by law that will be later. But right now this um tackles low low-hanging fruit and uh avoids us having uh two conflicting um bylaws that deal with really the same issue. So uh, that's it for this bylaw. Um, and I'm here for any questions.
All right, any questions? Councillor Peebles.
Thank you, worship. Uh, Mr. Ellis, does this address that thing that we were kind of talking about, about how a guy could have a package delivered, but according to the bylaw, it would only allow them one visit per week or per day or whatever that was? Is that something that would be addressed in this?
Um, thank you councillor Peebles. Uh, this bylaw doesn't address that. If we wanted to change those rules about uh number of um visits uh for home occupations, then that would be um to do that, we would have to change that uh uh section in the new land use by law. But this just uh uh eliminates the possibility of someone um having to look at two different things for a business license by law. Then now they can just get the rules all in one place instead of two places.
Councillor Ballas.
Uh, under definitions, is cannabis not part of adult business?
Thank you councillor Ballas. Um, with um, I mean, some may think that uh cannabis is adult business, but uh with legalization a couple of years ago, uh cannabis is its own separate use. Um, just like liquor stores. So now adult businesses are limited to um the other traditional adult kind of uses. So I don't think I
Councillor Kamana. Thank you, Mr. Ellis.
Still should be under adult business.
It's a separate uh section itself. But I think like Mr. Ellis mentioned, uh, when it took legalized, it put it onto a separate category.
I did question the same thing, yeah, that because liquor stores and tobacco is under there.
That was my understanding, but.
Correct. And we also um, we want to try to avoid um uh conflicts with our land use by law. Um, so that's what the, that's what the business license by law aims to do is um not call one thing uh in the business, in the land use by law and then something totally different in the business license by law.
So just for clarification, like what is all in adult business right now?
Thank you. Um, adult business is like strip clubs, um adult um paraphernalia shops and and stuff like that. Details.
So, yeah, so I believe when we created the uh bylaw for um order.
Actually, sorry, um, thank you, and that, um, the adult business definitions right now, uh, sorry, it does include um smoke shops, liquor stores. Um, but the new, what we would intend to do is we would take those out so that adult businesses wouldn't include liquor stores. But right now, we're just taking out the um home occupation stuff.
Come, yeah, I think of councillor Kamana first and then councillor Wheeler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, just for my clarification. So like you mentioned, you're taking the uh home occupations as per the uh land use by law on this, and then you will be bringing the other ones, you know, step by step. Is that the the process that you're trying to follow?
Correct, yes.
Councillor Wheeler.
Yeah, I just want to say when we passed the cannabis by law that we had these discussions and decided to put cannabis out on its own because we were going to be changing the bylaw and changing other pieces. And like you said, tobacco shouldn't necessarily be under adult business. Our plan, council's plan, we request administration go through and change and pull all those pieces out. And you're saying it's coming forward, so.
Councillor Peebles.
Yeah, thank you. I I think this will be kind of interesting too, because I think some of those restrictions are put in because people didn't want their liquor stores too close to schools. And there there's a whole bunch of stuff that we had in there. So I'm sure that'll be a a boisterous conversation, to say the least. But glad that this is kind of coming together. So it's a little bit more clear on what we're talking about when we see adult.
All right, if there's no other questions, is there a councillor that I'd like to give a motion? Councillor McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would make a motion that council give first reading to propose business license amending by law twenty twenty-one oh one D as presented.
All right, thank you very much. Any comments, questions or debate on that? Seeing none, so the motion is that council give first reading to propose business license amending by law. All in favor? That is carried. Is there someone that would like to give a motion for third?
Second.
Second?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'll make the motion uh that council give second reading to propose business licensing amending by law twenty twenty-one dash zero one dash D as presented. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any comments, questions or debate on that? Seeing none, so the motion is that council give second reading to propose business license amending by law. All in favor? That is carried. Is there a councillor that I'd like to make a motion to consider giving third reading? Councillor Wheeler.
I move that council consider giving third reading to propose business amending by law twenty twenty-one oh one D as presented.
All right, any comments, questions or debate on that? All right, so the motion is to consider giving third reading to propose business license amending by law. All in favor? All right, that was unanimous. So that allows us to um move forward with the third reading. Is there a councillor that would like to make a third reading motion? Councillor Dodds.
I'd like to make the motion that council give third reading to propose business license amending by law twenty twenty-one zero one D as presented.
All right, so the final nail in the coffin, council give third and reading to propose business license amending by law. All in favor? That is carried. All right, thank you very much for that. We're now on to eight point three. Let's see what my time is here. Eight point three, proposed repealing by law twenty twenty-one dash zero two dash A, presented for first, second and third reading. Ms. Griesen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council. Um, February third meeting of the Governance and Priorities Committee meeting, we discussed a a direction uh from council with respect to an economic development committee. Um, the formation of a committee, which will be later on in this uh meeting, uh does mean that we have to take a look at a repealing by law for uh by law number twenty twenty-one zero two A. Uh, this would repeal the economic development by law of twenty seventeen fourteen C as well as that amending by law of twenty nineteen fourteen C. Um, this, of course, just uh as we move forward to just an economic committee rather than council as a whole, it's just a housekeeping duty. So it's presented for readings from council.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, um, now that we no longer have the Committee of a Whole for Economic Developments, it is correct, we do have to repeal it. We do have to repeal it because there was some level of decision making outlined in that bylaw, so. It is pertinent that if we don't have the committee, that we don't have the bylaw. Any questions of administration? Counselor Ballas?
I'm just going to make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
I move that council give first reading to uh repealing bylaw twenty twenty one oh two A as presented.
All right, any comments, questions, or debates? On that, seeing none, so the motion is that council give first reading for the repealing bylaw. All in favor? That is carried. Is there a counselor that I'd like to make a motion for second reading? Counselor Dodds?
I'd like to make a motion that council give second reading to repealing bylaw twenty twenty one zero two A as presented.
All right, thank you very much for that. Any comments, questions, or debate? Counselor Ballas, your light, your mic is on if you're. Oh, thank you. The motion was that uh we give second reading to repealing bylaw. All in favor? That is carried. Is there a counsel that I'd like to make a motion to consider giving third and final reading to the repealing bylaw?
Mayor, I'd make that motion that we consider giving third and final reading to repealing bylaw twenty twenty one oh two A as presented.
All right, thank you very much. Any comments, questions, or debate on that? The motion is that council give third and final reading to repealing bylaw twenty twenty one dash two dash A as presented. All in favor? So that is unanimous, so it does allow us for to make a motion for third and final reading. Is there a counselor that would like to make that motion? Counselor Ballas? All right. Any last comments, questions, or debate? Seeing none, the motion is that council give third and final reading to repealing bylaw twenty twenty one dash zero two dash A as presented. All in favor? That is carried, and that bylaw has been repealed. Just a random question. So the last. Motion for a bylaw, it was just third reading of proposed bylaw, but this one was third and final reading of repealing bylaw. What's the difference between just third reading and third and final reading? I don't need that answer.
Okay, I'm pretty sure it should all be third and final reading.
It's because I was about to say third and final, but then I saw it wasn't there, so I wasn't sure if there was a technicality issue, but. Okay, we'll move on to eight point four, Internal Policing Committee, Community Security, Fire Services Committee, Terms of Reference. And we have our very own Mr. Tom Thompson. Here to move us through the process.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council.
Good morning.
I'm here this morning to present the Internal Policing, Community Security, Fire Service Committee Terms of Reference. It's a bit of a mouthful. Uh, as council is aware, we have uh presented this uh at Council GMP. And uh there was uh no comments at that point in time. So at this point in time, administration is recommending that council approve the terms of reference for this committee. And I'm open to questions.
Any questions? Counselor Peebles?
I just want to know what we're going to refer to this committee as. Are we going to get a cool acronym? Are we going to change the name because it's pretty aggressive?
Sure, once the committee gets together, we will come up with an acronym of some sort.
It'll be the IPCF FSC.
You know, that one.
Um, I have a question, so. If. In the near future, or in the future at all, um, the Town of Drayton Valley Council. Does want to revisit the opportunity or the prospect of its own municipal police force. I would feel that this is a committee that would be well suited to look at that opportunity. But do you feel that the structure of it would impede in. Having honest conversation, having the staff sergeant of the RCMP sitting on it? What you mean is, I think you need to obviously have to have the staff sergeant sitting on this to have any validity to it. But do you think that um this would be a committee that would be well positioned to look at a municipal police force? Or if that would be set aside due to possible conflicts?
I think it would be, it is the right committee to discuss that type of uh venture. Um, and having those individuals on there, I I don't perceive there being a uh. A conflict.
Yeah, I guess at the end of the day, they would still be operating in our community under the provincial funding that they receive. And I do know that the provincial government has put out, um, I think I forwarded the email on to you. And that's asking or requesting information because they're hoping to have a report by April of twenty twenty one for a provincial police force. But it just, uh, I know it's something that our community has looked at in the past, or this council has looked at. We've put some time into the research of a municipal police force. At the time, I liked the idea, I wasn't necessarily in favor of it, but I do think it is something for the. Uh longevity of our community to make it the community where people want to reside. Um, I think it is something that should come back to the table, but I'll leave that for an election campaign. So, any other questions for administration?
Counselor McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The obvious is the that we have shared services with the county of Brazos. Um, I I don't see. Uh, anything that that recognizes that and uh. The question that I'm asking is, do we and should we be including them?
I think at this point in time, um, just having an internal committee uh to to at least get started is a good step forward. At times, uh, politics kind of convolute uh discussions, and so it'd be, it it's. I I would advise that we just keep it internal for the time being and see how the committee uh pans out and rolls out. And then once, once it gets up and running, then to to uh to reach out to county would be the next step.
Ms. Griesen, you had a comment?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, to Counselor McGee, um, the terms of reference also do not preclude us from uh connecting with Brazo County through the committee. Um, in terms of either just a networking or an information basis. So um, short of formal representation, we are still able as a committee to reach out to. Any type of um stakeholder that we need to get information on.
I'm sure their involvement would just come to the conclusion that they're going to pull their RCMP funding, and then once we tell them they're not paying any, they will be very disappointed. Counselor Peebles? I move that council approve the uh terms of reference for the Internal Policing, Community Security, Fire Service Committee. Also known as the IPCS FSC as presented.
All right, any comments, questions, or debate on that motion? I'm going to make sure I get my uh. If there's no comments, questions, or debate on that, the motion is that council approve the terms of reference for the PSF committee as presented. All in favor? That is carried. And I'm going to see if we can push to eight point seven before taking a break. We're on eight point. Eight point five, Internal Economic Development Committee, Terms of Reference. Ms. Griesen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, last couple of weeks, very busy in terms of forming uh committee structures for uh town operations. Again, at the February third Governance and Priorities Committee meeting, administration was directed to bring forward terms of reference for an internal economic development committee. Other than otherwise known as EDC, so a little simpler. Um, so the draft terms of reference uh have been prepared for council's consideration and approval. Um, and I'm here to answer any questions council may have.
Okay, any questions for administration on this one? So this, Counselor Peebles?
Um, yeah, just a question on this. So I know in some of our discussions, we talked about having the mayor on there. Is this. Asking that we would have the mayor as ex officio and then two from council on this committee? Is that what we'd be?
Can I make a recommendation on that? Uh, my recommendation is that we would appoint appoint two counselors, and I would likely attend these meetings as ex officio. But in the event that I wasn't able to attend one, I think it's still pertinent to have two counselors. Um, and then I would just likely attend as many of the meetings as possible. Not saying that I have, I set priorities for which meetings I attend as ex officio, but uh. There is indeed a preference. So, yeah, my recommendation would be two counselors be appointed to it. If that's all right with administration. Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you. Can I just get a highlight from a council person as to why we're bringing this committee back? I was away on February third, so.
I can attempt to do the calls notes. Um, so. Um, for the. Conversation that a couple of counselors had to step out on regard to a tax concession. The conversation led to what kind of incentives, what kind of boxes could we put together, one for manufacturing, one for retail business, one. What kind of tax incentives are we wanting to offer, rather than just kind of picking and choosing, we could create something? So that was kind of one of the initiatives, we're saying if there was a committee that started to work on this stuff, then it could be brought forward back to council to have a bit of a discussion on it. And see it from a more holistic approach, I think is kind of where that went. So I know we have the education committee that we're going to put some reference to. This one, they would be kind of focused a lot more on what kind of incentives could be offering, exploring a few of those options. So we would give them a bit more of a purpose, it wouldn't be just like economic development was before. The terms would be a little bit different, to my understanding of what I took. So you're getting Corey Peebles' version of what I think happened.
Okay, I I think that's good. Um. So there'd be basically like a local focus on economic development, then what we're doing here and our businesses and stuff that's happening. Because there's other stuff we have talked about, like with the business license review that's going on, and what do we offer for our business licenses? Like when you sign up and get a business license, what do you use the business get? We've requested that that some of that stuff be looked at before, so if this committee would be taking some of that on too, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think my understanding is this is um much more of a a local lens on the economic development. You know, we're not going to be jet setting around the world trying to attract investment to Drayton Valley. You know, we might, we might be looking at uh policies and procedures that may make Drayton Valley. A more investable place, but uh I think it has more of a a local focus and interacting with the local businesses that are already in our community.
And who would be the administration lead on this?
If I may answer that, Mr. Mayor. The uh, the position right now occupied in the seat will be the lead. However, we do have a an economic development coordinator, and that person will for the time be be also attending these.
Okay, Counselor Peebles?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion, if that's okay, that council establish an economic development committee and adopt the proposed. Economic Development Committee Terms of Reference as presented, and that council appoint uh Mr. Tom McGee. And uh, Mr. Bill Ballas as the Economic Development Committee, or to the Economic Development Committee.
All right, is there, so you threw out some names? Counselor Peebles?
Yeah, could I give some rationale behind my thoughts on that? Okay, so I know that a lot of this conversation came up from. A couple of people on council that had to step out regarding some of the incentives and things that we had packaged. Um, looking forward to something's coming, I'm assuming the people that are going to be taking on the education portfolio. And I was looking at uh just Tom McGee's desire to get out there and connect with people, plus this was something that Bill had initially brought forward to us. So I figured the three of these guys teamed up with with Ms. Griesen and the team, that they would be able to come to some pretty good conclusions on this one, so. Okay, it wasn't just names out of the hat. All right, anything else, Counselor Commander?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, you know, I would, I love the idea of local focus. Um, it's great that uh. Um, we, you know, um, I've been preaching that, you know, we need to protect the businesses we already have. Uh, then, um, you know, of course, if we can bring new businesses, that's great, but this is our bread and butter um in our community here. So that's, that's excellent that we are, you know, um, focusing on the local focus, and I think it's great to counsel us that that can get that, get get that job done. So I'm I'm very happy about that.
Okay, um, is there any debate for the counselors that were appointed in the motion? All right. Okay, if there's no more comments, questions, or debates on this, the motion is that council establish an economic development committee. And adopt the proposed economic development committee terms of reference as presented, and that Counselor McGee and Counselor Ballas. Be uh on the economic development committee. All in favor? That is carried. Uh, eight point six, Internal Education Committee Terms of Reference. Ms. Griesen, it's you again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, on the February third Governance and Priorities meeting, uh, council direct administration bring forward terms of reference for an internal education committee. This committee has been acting uh for quite some time uh informally without terms of reference. So this is for all intents and purposes, uh, making the committee official in terms of um. The organizational structure of the Town of Drayton Valley. So the terms of reference uh have been attached and are being presented for council's consideration and approval.
Any questions for administration? Do you have a question? Okay, Counselor Dodds?
Um, I just have a question. Um, I know that I looked at this previously, but then I had gone to the city, so I never got a chance to pull it back up till after. Um, I would just ask that under the authority of the committee, that where it says this chair spokesperson will rotate based on a mutually agreed upon schedule. That that be changed to reflect our other committees' terms of references? In the aspect more of the chair, which shall be one of the appointed counselors, will be selected by the committee at its first meeting after the organizational meeting of the town.
Did you get that, Ms. Griesen?
Yes.
Because I didn't really get it.
It's it's the same terminology as the.
As the other, as the other refer or terms of references.
Okay. So I'm assuming if someone wants to make a motion, are they going to make a motion? Based. On. The changes presented? Okay. All right. Do you still want to make a motion? All right, Counselor Commander, you have a comment?
No, I just wanted to uh, just again, we went back and forth with the uh. With the terms of reference, but just wanted to get to your background on uh the the change that Counselor Dodds. I guess, um, ask, ask uh here, just what is the rationale behind that?
Just to be consistent with all the terms of references.
Ms. Griesen, just a question for you. Uh. Yes, I understand there's uh. Two other uh committees with the the similar uh terms of reference, but are there any other committees that have different terms of reference? And different uh uh terminologies, terminologies in in that sense?
Thank you, Counselor Gamanna. Um, this would be unique to this particular committee uh for rotational chairs. It's not a terminology that is unique to perhaps other municipalities, but certainly this would be one that, at the current time, would mean that. All of our other committees work on the basis of one chair.
Counselor Wheeler?
Um, I would just need clarification. Uh, Counselor Gamanna, you're. Saying that it might be best to leave it as the rotational chair, and I guess that I would need more of a clarification on that definition of. I would assume, because it says you can rotate whenever you want, that it would still be done on an annual basis. Like if it doesn't say in there when you are rotating, um, it might be more advantageous to say. When you are, if that's what you mean. I'm not sure.
Um, no, I I just, this is my opinion. I I think we have uh. Little, little more than eight months to go, right, for for the term? And then so um what we can do in my mind is that, you know, we can. Have a four month uh rotation there, and then come next council, then they can uh decide what rotation that would be.
Okay, so I guess Counselor Ballas or whomever wants to make a motion, I will leave. The decision up to you and how you want to present the motion. And then we can go from there. Counselor Ballas? And are you going to appoint two counselors to this committee? All right, so the motion is that um it be adopted with the amended changes that. Counselor Dodds presented, that council appoint Counselor Gamanna and Counselor Dodds to the education committee. So I guess I'll open it up for any comments, questions, or debates on that, but the motion. So I guess I'll open it up for any comments, questions, or debates on that with the motion that was presented. Counselor Wheeler?
For me, I, I like to have the consistency and the definition is the same as the others. I think it makes it easy. But there's also no reason why you can't switch chairs at any point. It just prescribes that, that's the recommendation, is that someone takes up the chair or there's a, a conversation about it at that point. But at any point on any committee, we can switch chairs, so.
So I'm assuming, since this is a new terms of reference, that the committee chair would be appointed at the meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, Counselor McGee?
Just to add to some of the conversations I've been having with the MLA, that he was really supportive of us establishing this and, and putting it down as, as a committee. I think it was, seemed like there was a bit of, a bit of a struggle at some point in time. But he, as they say, he was supportive and, and would, certainly would encourage us to do this from the MLA's point of view.
Okay. All right, if there's no other comments, questions, or debates. So the motion is to establish the committee with the changes that were presented and with Counselor Gomana and Counselor Dodds on the education committee, all in favor? That is carried. We'll now move on to eight point seven. We're going to take a break after eight point seven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Town bylaw 200801C requires that the Drayton Valley Early Childhood Development Centre, the childcare board, sorry, consist of three community at large members who shall be appointed by resolution of council for either a two or a three year term. Currently, we have two vacant positions and they are for two year terms on the board. These vacancies were advertised and we received two applications, one from Tess Kotir and one from Blair Gilman. Both are new applicants and would be new members to the board if they were approved by council. But the information and their applications are attached to the agenda package and they are being presented here to council for consideration.
Counselor Ballas?
And administration is satisfied with the applicants?
Yes, Mr. Ballas, they are.
Counselor Ballas?
I'll move that council appoint Tess Koto and Blair Gilman as community at large members for the Early Childhood Development Centre Board, childcare operational board for a two year term expiring October 31st, 2022.
All right, thank you very much for that. Counselor Peoples?
So just to clarify, this is for the ECDC, not for the EDC? This is?
Let's play that game, Counselor Peoples.
All right, so any comments, questions, or debate on this? So the motion is that council appoint Tessa Kotu and Blair Gilman as a community at large members for the ECDC board for a two year term expiring October 31st, 2022. All in favor? That is carried. And my apologies, we do have to do eight point eight before our break. I, I thought eight point nine was eight point eight, but now that I read a little closer, it is not. So eight point eight is the new aquatic centre amenities sponsorship rights agreement for approval. Ms. Dreeson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I am more than pleased to bring this forward to council for its consideration. As council is aware, we have a local community aquatic facility committee that has been formed that has been working to develop a fundraising strategy. As council is aware, we still have a fair way to go in terms of meeting the $21.9 million target for the aquatic facility. The IPD team is certainly well underneath their way in terms of the design and looking forward to the April start for construction. The facility, the aquatic facility committee has been working with a few organizations and businesses. And two of those organizations and businesses have signed an agreement with basically their letter of intent in the agreement to look at becoming naming sponsors for the facility. That sponsorship package was presented a year ago and was adopted by council. The first is the Rotary Club of Drayton Valley has signed an agreement in hopes of being awarded the naming sponsor for the lazy river within the aquatic facility. These naming rights are, that naming right is for a period of 10 years. The sum of that sponsorship is $75,000 and will be paid over a five year term, $15,000 per year. The other naming sponsor is Pride Ventures, looking at signing an agreement to be the naming sponsor of the Universal Change Room, the Family Change Room. This sponsorship is only for five years and it's a lump sum funding of $15,000. And with respect to the final signage, as we get into the final design for signage, then the actual name will be coming back to council for approval. But this is just to recognize that they are securing the naming sponsorships for those amenities. So those two agreements, minus of course, the name of the, of the actual amenity, is being presented to council for approval.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for administration? Is there a councillor that I'd like to make a motion for the Rotary Club sponsorship? Counselor Gomana?
It's my pleasure to make this motion that council approves the sponsorship rights agreement between the town and the Rotary Club of Drayton Valley as presented.
All right, any comments, questions, or debate on the Rotary Club?
Just a question on the, the motion. If, if you belong to the Rotary, can you make the motion?
I, I think there's no conflict because it's a, it's a nonprofit organization, right?
It's a nonpro.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, nonprofit and there's no benefit being gained from.
Okay. All right, so any comments, questions, or debates? So the motion is that council approve the sponsorship rights agreement between the town and the Rotary Club of Drayton Valley as presented. All in favor? That is carried. Is there a member of council that I'd like to make a motion for the Pride Ventures sponsorship? Counselor McGee?
Mr. Mayor, I, I would make a motion that, that, that the sponsorship for the, yeah, so that the council give, approve the sponsorship rights agreement between the town and Pride Ventures as presented. And that's the family.
The universal changer.
Universal changer.
Okay, yeah, all right. Any comments, questions, or debate on that? So the motion is that council approve the sponsorship rights agreement between town and Pride Ventures Inc. as presented. All in favor? Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, council. I just wanted to make a comment that the individual with Pride Ventures through Lorraine and Walter Bida, and I just want to recognize Lorraine Bida as the chair of the aquatic facility fundraising committee.
Excellent. So I think we're halfway through the vote, but I'll ask the question again just because I didn't get a chance to fully tally it. So that the council approve the sponsorship rights agreement between town and Pride Ventures as presented. All in favor? All right, that was carried. Thank you very much. So we will call a ten minute break. And when we return, we'll be moving into our last decision item, which is enclosed. That was at 11:04 AM, which was approved. Is there a councillor that would like to make a motion? Counselor Ballas? No.
To return to the bargaining table, thank you.
Can you, can you start over again with your microphone on?
I move that council does not ratify memorandum of agreement and direct administration to return to the bargaining table.
All right. The motion is that council does not ratify the memorandum of agreement and direct administration to return to the bargaining table. All in favor? That is carried. So that is the end of our decision items. And we're on to department reports with planning and developments up first. Mr. Ellis?
Thank you, Mayor Dirksen, members of council. So planning and development, business license amending bylaw, which we had this morning. And then in further to that, a new business license bylaw. Safety codes review, that's a matter that we have at GMB this afternoon. We're forging ahead with our asset management initiative. Dory right now is working on a presentation that will, we will deliver that to council in the coming weeks. Our ICF matters, co-mediation. And we have sent out the application for the Alberta Community Partnership on covering some of the costs with mediation. And then just responding to daily inquiries from members of the public, respective applicants and not. So that's basically it for planning and development. And I'm here for any questions?
Okay, any questions? All right, thank you very much. Move on to nine point two, engineering. Mr. Olnick. Olnick?
Good morning, again, Mr. Mayor and esteemed council. So just to quickly update you on a few things with engineering. We are still waiting on the engineering assessment for the Omniplex Bridge. We're kind of held up at that point after getting a couple of competing quotes. So pending the assessment, then we'll move forward with the grant money to get that replaced along with, like I said before, a few other bridges around town that are in desperate need of it. By Friday, we'll have our RFP out for line painting, which I'm quite excited for. I've done a bit of research with the help of a member from previous senior administration on trying to find a transportation or Transport Canada approved product that will last a bit longer so we're not having to apply this two or three times and then it's still fading somewhere, you know, by spring or somewhere through the summer. So stay tuned for that. And then by Monday, I'll be sending out the RFP for the concrete and sidewalk work that's partly funded by an MSP grant. It'll be about 900 meters around the New Evergreen School as per the grant parameters. And then about 600 meters that we'll do throughout town, getting or using the sidewalk study from 2018 to identify the worst spots and basically by triage, get the worst done first. Okay. One thing that I, I would like to bring forward to council is the Meridian Islands, specifically by Scotiabank and also between Royal Bank and the BMO, is I think those islands could definitely use a refreshing. So I was kind of hoping to use approximately about $20,000 as the quote to encapsulate them, a lot like how the Duke is on the west side if you go into Drive. I think that would definitely spruce it up a bit. And I, I think aesthetic wise, it's very much needed. So I was going to have Ms. Dreeson maybe perhaps bring that to you guys and see what your thoughts were. As for utilities, we're going to be sending out the RFP for the raw water reservoir here very quickly. And with Public Works, we're doing citywide training for the staff to start to get that going. And of course, rank maintenance pending temperature, it's a little bit too cold right, right now unfortunately. And just going through recertifying staff for compliance for health and safety. And of course, once we get the new tandem here, then we can begin on my little dream project of doing residential snow clearing in between the lulls. So I'm open for any questions if you have.
Any questions, Counselor McGee?
There was some conversation about the Meridian on the, beside the Royal Bank as you're coming down 50th of actually taking that entirely out. Is, is, is that still being talked about or are we just going to spruce them up?
Thank you, thank you, Counselor McGee. I'm not familiar with any talks from administration about taking out that meridian, but I know that from the Public Works side of things, there has been a lot of accidents, a lot of damage to that island and we're consistently replacing signs. So even though it's used as a traffic calming measure, I mean, if, if council deems that perhaps we could remove it, I mean, we can definitely look at that for sure. Because I know there has been issues with it in the past. So for sure, if we get direction, then we can go forward with that.
I wonder if it's direction that we give or do you bring recommendations in? I would, it seemed to me that if, if it's causing the problems that it is, then, then the direction might come from administration to say, yeah, let's clear that out of there. Take that tree out.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor McGee. We can definitely look at that. I don't really see that as being much of an issue from an administrative side. I, I really have no issue with taking it out as my recommendation. I, I know we get a lot of calls from residents about turning in and out of fast gas and then out of the back alley behind the bakery in Royal Bank. So it might be a very welcomed move, so we can look at that for sure.
For sure. Counselor Peoples?
I think it would just be important to get the history behind why it was put there in the first place. I, I can't quite recall, but I think there was a few accidents that we had from people crossing that meridian from behind the bank, which is why they put that up to stop that. So there was some safety measures that we, but we keep those safety measures in if, if find a new way. But I just don't want to just take it out because, because we couldn't.
Any other questions? Counselor Wheeler and Counselor Ballas?
Not a question, but just a comment that we've been getting great feedback on the walking trails being cleared. With all the snow we've had, people, I have a few family members who walk every day and they're like, it's done every day. It's amazing. They're so happy, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you for that, council.
I think in, in regards to 50th there, I think there was some discussion, in fact, into extending an area of some sort of barricade so that they, they could not make any left turns. Yeah. Yeah, because that impedes and creates a lot of issues there where people are trying to make that left turn.
Thank you for that, Counselor Ballas. Yeah, unfortunately, most of the damage that we're getting to our signage and even at some points, the tree is actually the semis that supply the bakery and also fast gas with the food and they usually end up wiping out our sign. Hence why you see that massive cement block there is to try as a deterrent to, because it gets very costly if once a week we're starting to replace spaces and signs, right? So for sure.
Anything else? All right, so thank you very much for your time. Community services and FCSS, Ms. Dreeson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Just a few things. Obviously, the presentation by EPBR with respect to their fire and ice Valentine's scavenger hunt sounds exciting. So yeah, I just have to give credit out to EPBR for partnering with us, third year now with EPBR. And they never failed, put on a great show. So I hope that the community residents take part in that. We received yesterday a virtual walkthrough of the new aquatic facility. So I'm hoping that everybody's had a chance to look at it. Of course, there will be some refinement and the coloring still has to be worked on as all the finishes have not been applied. And things such as some of the other amenities, such as the baffling for sound. But we are encouraging people to take a look at that. Get excited, get involved. And let's all look forward to April start date on that facility. With the opening, closing, opening, closing, opening, closing, the pool is again opening. February 7th, 17th is the new date. And again, too, this is with the school programs, lessons. Public swimming is not available in the pool. We are, of course, as well, too, with Owen and his team, looking at the Omoplex with respect to what we can do with the one ice surface. We are wanting to get commitments, so we want to present that information to council so that council has an idea of what type of commitments we do have in order to keep ice surface open. That, I'll leave it at that for my report on community services.
All right, any questions? Counselor Ballas?
Are, in regards to homelessness, homeless people with this weather, they have sufficient places to be going?
I spoke with our CPO yesterday and they did a drive around looking at. I spoke with our C P O yesterday and they did a drive around, looking at all the normal places where they would normally be and they're not there. So they're hunkered down somewhere. But of course, our map program is still open, but even during the day, it's they need to find a nice warm place and they seem to be finding something somewhere.
All right, thank you very much. We move on to emergency services. Mister Thompson?
Morning again. So this morning, I'm here to do update reports on animal control and C P O officer. So in regards to animal control, just a few stats to to present to council. We've had our animal control officer in place for roughly about six months now. During that time, we've taken in a total of sixty-three animals, twenty-one dogs and forty-two cats. Thirty-nine of those animals were returned to their owners. Nineteen were released to cause for critters. Unfortunately, we had to euthanize five of them as they were their medical conditions were beyond saving them, unfortunately. But that kind of gives you a few stats that our animal control officer is busy and actively engaged in the community. Terms of January for this month, we've taken in total of seven animals, four dogs and three cats. Good news is five of those animals were returned to their owners and the remaining two were turned over to cause for critters. And some other happenings with the colder weather, we have noticed that a lot of animals are being left in vehicles while people are doing their shopping. Unfortunately, people don't realize that a vehicle becomes a freezer and so animals are are under a lot of stress when the weather is this cold and they're left in vehicles. So we're encouraging the public just to leave your animal at home when you're doing your shopping around town. We are handing out brochures and educating the public. Animal Control Officer has handed out several brochures and talked to people who just didn't realize that a vehicle can get that cold during the winter time. She does have a carry a thermometer that can read the temperature inside the vehicle when it's parked, so that's a pretty strong message that she's sending when they they look at that and then realize, wow, it is pretty cold in the vehicle. So she's doing a really good job with that. We're also bringing forward or or looking to increase the number of pet licenses for our animal owners in the community. One of the big issues we have is when we pick up an animal, if it doesn't have a license, we have no idea who it belongs to or where it's from. Consequently, it takes us a while to try and locate the owner. Plus, we incur fees in terms of putting the animal in our animal control shelter and having cause for creatures look after it. So we are trying to encourage people to get licenses for their pets. And one of the programs that we're looking to bring forward is a free ride home deal so that if your animal is is out and about and it gets picked up and it has a license, we will return your animal free of charge. Just to encourage people to to get a license. It will pay off for you. The cost of a license for a cat, if the animal is fixed, is fifteen dollars or twenty-five if it isn't. For a dog, it's twenty-five for the license and if it's fixed or sorry, yeah, twenty-five if it's fixed and if it's it's seventy-five dollars. The fee for fines, the license fee is, sorry, if if you have your animal at large, it's a hundred dollars or a hundred and fifty. And then plus you're paying kennel fees for that animal to be stored while while it's been captured and put in doggy jail. So it is a program that we are promoting to encourage people to get a license so that if their animal is picked up, we can return it quickly and safely to to your your residents.
Counselor Wheeler?
With the license, how does someone get a license?
If anybody is interested, they can contact the our town here and our animal control officer will get their license for them.
So they don't have to physically come down here?
I don't believe so. I think they can just do it over the phone. I will follow up with that to make sure that that all.
It would be great if there'd be some kind of an online option or something for.
Make that happen. So moving on to the C P O report. Our C P O officer in the last month has received thirty-three calls for service and those are the calls that we have to do a follow-up report and investigation on. The majority of the complaints have involved our homeless population, setting up camps and lighting fires in our public parks. We also have issues with our homeless sleeping in breezeways during the day, so that goes to what Annette was talking about and have them finding places to stay during the daytime. It is a concern. We are addressing it through our C P O to give them the resources they need in terms of the the shelter and working with them to help get them the services that they require. We've also been dealing with kids driving radically in the Omniplex parking lot. Again, it's an education component to to stop them and to discuss safe driving practices with them. One of the issues that we have there is they park and they chat while they're eating their their lunches and they just dump the garbage out all over the parking lot. So we're we've set up garbage cans there and we're encouraging them to use the garbage cans rather than just dumping their garbage everywhere. We've also been spending a little bit of time talking to people in regards to the weather and shoveling. We've had some complaints, people not shoveling their sidewalks, so we've been addressing those as they as they've come in. We've also now because of the cold weather, had issues with people extending their extension cord across the sidewalks, which promotes a tripping hazard. So we've been working with with people. Again, it's not an enforcement thing, it's more of an education thing to encourage people to avoid those types of situations. In terms of our C P O's training, one of the things that have come that's come out is there's now a requirement for our C P O officers to carry Narcan as part of their equipment. Consequently, we had our C P O officer receive his training in Narcan use, so he's good to go and and ready to to use it if needed. We're still waiting for him to finish his last course to become a full level one C P O officer. It's a legal course. It's the only one that is he's missing. It has been delayed three times now. So it just keeps dragging on. He's getting extremely frustrated, waiting for the province to put the course on. The course is now scheduled for the end of February, so we're hoping that that gets done so he can want to become a level C P O, level one C P O officer. And that's all I have for report.
Any questions?
Any questions? All right, just just a quick question. So currently, if if I'm homeless and I'm in a breezeway during the day, that's not that's frowned upon and the library is closed. So where where are we housing people in at minus thirty-five during the day?
Thank you, Councilor McGee. We are not housing the homeless during the day. They are having to find a place for themselves during the day. So the only shelter we can provide at this time is over the evening time. So from, I think it is nine o'clock at night, ten o'clock at night until seven in the morning. After that, they have to move out and they're having to provide for themselves during that time.
One of the, if I can just build upon what Annette has said is our C P O officer is encouraging him to to go to F C S S to talk to them to see what services are available to to help them in that respect. So that's what we're we're doing.
So and F C S S has no ability to house them either, right? But they they may have some funding. Is that is that what that means?
F C S S doesn't have any of the funding to help out with the individuals. What they do have is the ability to connect them with what those resources might be. So whether they need assistance through Alberta Works, whether there's some assistance that's provided through Alberta Mental Health, through addictions counseling, those are the services and connections that F C S S will try to help with. A lot of these homeless individuals don't have the online access to go after some of the funding that they need or can get through Alberta Works. So that's why they go to F C S S and our homelessness and poverty coordinator helps them with gaining access to that program, to those programs.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Do we have a safety and protective services with Merlin Clausen?
Mister Mayor, we don't have a safety report at this time.
Okay, so no move to our C A O administration capital projects update with you, Miss Driesen?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Just some of the, I mean, there are a lot of things going on. Just highlight a few things. Council has always indicated that one of the major things they want to see happen is with the asset management. So we will be having a presentation to bring council up to speed on asset management. I believe that's on February twenty-fourth. As council, of course, we are preparing the necessary documentation for the co mediation process. Its first meeting starts tomorrow from two thirty until six thirty, I believe. So again, too, just trying to pull together the necessary information. Few pieces have been forwarded to council and hopefully by the end of today, we'll be able to send all the rest of the material. Just want to comment on the newly formed police and security fires. The multi alphabet committee, the alphabet committee. We had a meeting with Acting Staff Sergeant just on Friday and it was a very good meeting. And some of the things that are kind that came out of that discussion with Staff Sergeant Matthews is that sometimes we're focusing on the wrong things. And it came to light during the discussion that I think that we'll be having further discussions about what really needs to be a focus on with respect to solving some of the security issues and policing issues that we have in our community. But it was a very good discussion. Looking forward to that committee, moving forward to to bring some things forward. Also working on preparing an agenda and working outline for the council retreat, March eighth and ninth. And I'll be sitting with Dinah McQueen on Friday to work through the agenda. We've had a couple of discussions so far. But looking forward to bringing that into a focus and bringing it back to council for your consideration if we need to tweak it in any way. I will leave it there for now.
Any questions? All right, we'll move on to our council reports with Counselor Ballas.
Thank you. Twenty-first of January, we had a library board meeting. Not much to report there other than the fact that they're crowded. They need space. They can't sufficiently operate. The children's library is not operating because there's just no space for it. So there is some urgency in trying to relocate the library. On the twenty-fifth, had the pleasure of being orientated by the Yellowhead Regional Library Board and I'm sure Nancy can really expand upon the orientation on that one. On the twenty-seventh, I sat in on a education meeting with Tanya and Annette and Amelia and Nancy and I was just sort of sitting there as a sounding board and found it very informative and encouraging by the progress that the committee is doing. On the third, we had a government's G M P meeting. On the fourth, sat in on a chamber meeting with Nancy and Diane and Waseem, chamber members. Just just to have a general type of meeting and discussion on roles of the chamber versus the roles of of council. And trying to get everybody on the same page. It looks like the chamber is going to take a lot more active role in in our community. On the fifth, as Annette mentioned, we had that meeting with Staff Sergeant Matthews, Acting Staff Sergeant Matthews. A lot of good information there in regards to tell us and building options and so on. And I'm sure there will be more discussion and things coming forward with that. And then in the afternoon, we had Alberta Hemp Alliance Directors Zone meeting where you you want to fill in on that? Where we had a meeting and going into a different direction with the Alberta Hemp Alliance is and that's separating the separation from the town and the Alberta Hemp Alliance and the Alberta Hemp Alliance becoming its own entity and so we don't have to wear those two hats. At that meeting, the directors have appointed Nanny Deal as the executive director for now. And there's been a lot of work and and there is going to be a lot of work in in expanding and and getting everything set up. It's like starting new basically because we're starting with basically nothing and have to build from that. But we certainly do appreciate the town's participation in the past because it certainly would have went nowhere without their their help. Thank you very much.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yeah, what other municipalities right now are are working on are on the hemp alliance? Like, how big is the area we're talking about is really my question, I guess?
The hemp alliance basically covers Alberta and we have representation from the south to the north to the east to the west. So there's Peace River Region, Lacklavish Region, St. Paul Region, Fallera, the South Region, Aragreen and so on.
That's awesome. I know that it's initiative that the town started a couple of years ago and it's great to see it take off on its own. So thanks for everyone who's been on that committee and working hard.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Peebles.
Thank you, Yourship. Yeah, just to kind of build off of what Bill is saying, but the kind of exciting thing is, it's funny, we we did all this work just to get back to the beginning, but the great news is is now we're working within the Agriculture Ministry. They're recognizing Alberta Hemp Alliance as their hub for everything with with the hemp industry, but we also want to have tie-ins for the cannabis industry as well. So together, we can be lobbying government where it's needed. Within this now, there's likely to be some funding that's coming from the province as well. So they want us to kind of be the ones that are gathering everybody together and then they're able to focus more on what's investable and how to work with us to make that happen. So it's it's pretty exciting next steps and a lot of work now. We we it took three years to become an overnight start, so I don't know how that works, but but it wouldn't have happened without the investment from the town and it's greatly it's recognized across the province with the hemp industry and it's 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 greatly appreciated. Also, on February third, we start our co mediation meetings and now we have a committee set so that we're going to have some oysters discussions about our I C Fs and I D Ps and I look forward to it. Because the best thing is when you can come to common ground, then you know the terms of the relationship and you can actually move forward. And then on February eighth, we had restaurants opening and one-on-one training and fitness centers. And I also had the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Team meeting. So we had a presentation from Mark Frey about some of his thoughts on homelessness and poverty. And and the the whole committee just kind of talked about what's what's going on. But one one thing that's interesting is there's more and more people with different types of backgrounds coming together to see how we can support the at-risk community in within our community. So between when you look at poverty side or with homelessness, there's different ideologies, there's different ways to attack it. And I don't think any one is necessarily better than the other. They're just different approaches. But what I like to see is that now there's I what I would love to see, and this is what I had brought forward to them and and just throwing it out there in the air in this thing that's only a few people listen to, but you guys, I have your attention. I would love to see a think tank where we take different people with a different passion and different skill sets and smash them all together and start to see what kind of collective ideas we have. And if it's not collective, maybe it's this is their lane and they do that really well and we give them permission to and we just kind of divide up these areas. I know there's there's some people that don't use the map program necessarily. They're trying to get people to come in. There's some people that have been troublesome and they are not actually allowed to go in. I know I got a message again today that there's five gentlemen that don't have anywhere to go during the day and they're pretty much saying, we don't want to go smash stuff and go. And they're pretty much saying, we don't want to go smash stuff and go to jail. We just want to stay warm while it's cold outside. So and that's that's fair enough. So how do we rally around these things as a community? This is not that committee's problem. And I even told them in that meeting, this this whole issue, this is a community issue. You are the great people that have taken on this problem and said, we want to help in whatever capacity we can. And I honestly think you're going to see more and more people with a passion for mental health because many people that are homeless have mental health issues. There is a mental health crisis going on right now as a result of COVID and I don't want to see this grow exponentially. So I think as a community, as we tackle this, there could be a great solution. We come to our several solutions. That's in my report. All right. Thank you very much, Counselor Dodds.
I just have to start by saying, good job. Look at how the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Committee has really made you grown and really expand. It's great. Fantastic. So yeah, I've had a couple of chamber meetings. As Bill had said, you know, we're looking at what the role of the municipality is and what the role of the chamber is. What are some of the resources and information sessions that, you know, we can be bringing to the community? How we're supporting our small businesses and all businesses, not just the businesses that are chamber members as well. I also attended the Columbia Institute Lead Program, which was fantastic. That was really a good program. I just talked about a different program when we're dealing with homelessness and poverty, about how it's important to be advocating for that mental health right along with the RCMP and how housing first is the number one thing we need to have in our community before we can actually have this program and other things kind of start. Several education meetings, a sustainability meeting. We had two really good presentations for the landfill, so that's great. We're going to be following up with those discussions tomorrow. Had a meeting with the U of A Education on the Future Skills Meeting and just some initiatives moving forward on that. And then, of course, excuse me, we kicked off the mediators meeting. We got a chance to meet the facilitators and set the stage for mediation, which will be starting tomorrow. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Gomana?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. January 28th, I ended the Pembina's Area Synergy Meeting. As I updated last, GNP group shared some positive information about increased drilling activity around our community. Also shared information about possible activities on geothermal and lithium exploration around here in near future as well. So that was exciting to hear that there's some activity happening around our community. On February 2nd, had a meeting with the U of A, as Counselor Dodds mentioned, of future skills grant application and we have we've chubbed it jointly. On the 3rd, I ended the the first co-mediation discussions. And fourth, I ended the virtual AUME President's Presidential Summit on Policing, as well as the the meeting, the Alphabet Meeting that we had last week as well. That's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Counselor McGee.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, nothing of of any essence, other than I I've been walking every day and it's cold. And I I actually had to duck in and get warm at a store. And I'm, so I think about that, a group that has no place to go. I just think, oh, my goodness. And I've also been handing out cards. And you'll see in the council chambers, some cards that thank people for doing their walks and where you'll see, you know, a whole block done. It's usually a snow angel. And you get a card to them and it's, yeah, it's really appreciated. So there are some cards there and if in your neighborhood, grab some and hand them out.
Thank you very much, Counselor Wheeler.
Thank you. Our meeting that we had was on sustainability and we had two presentations from a couple of different organizations that are looking at the future of our landfill and what it could hold. And both of them are very different, but great ideas. And at our committee level, we're going to be having a meeting this week to really dive into them and discuss how it affects the town and where we want to take it and go. I know council's heard a little bit here and there, so just want to let everyone know that we're working on hopefully bringing more details forward in the near future. But yeah, both options seem seem exciting. So at this point, that's it. Everyone stay warm.
Thank you very much. So that brings it to me. No, not a whole lot to report, just doing the preparation for the co-mediation as it's already been discussed. Look forward to those conversations to see how how we can move our one community forward. And so and also I'd like to point out to the Public Works members who have been working in this cold the last few days. And I've received at least one email, maybe more, kind of applauding the work that they've done. And some town residents noticing them out, doing a very good job in a very cold setting. So it's very much appreciated, their hard work. So I just wanted to bring a highlight to that. So thank you. Information items, Brazu Foundation Meeting Minutes, November 16th, 2020. Drayton Valley Municipal Library Meeting Minutes, November 19th, 2020. Star Catholic School Boards Meeting Highlights, January 2021. Can I get a motion to accept those as information? Counselor Gomana, how in favor? That is carried. We will adjourn our meeting at 11:42 AM.